Let me see, selectmen's meetings are subject to being videotaped. So comb your hair, guys. Your image and voice may be recorded. And at this time, we have officially opened the selectmen's meeting for the season. September 8. And we will, the first order of business would be to approve, approval of minute, of meeting minutes.
None.
None. Okay. Item number two, approval of fiscal year motor vehicle refunds totaling $2,056.
No, it's, you've got to take the actual.
Out of here?
Nope, it's right there, see it on top?
Oh, here we go. Yeah, okay.
So it should be $2,000?
$56.57.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion on this?
No.
Okay. For the people watching, what happens is people move out of town, discontinue their registration or something, so we have to refund a certain amount of excise tax to them, and that's what this is about. So if there's no further discussion, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
You've got to sign the front sheet.
Third item. Acceptance of a letter of resignation from Anna Bradley from the Cable Advisory Commission. I would accept a motion on that regard.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay. Then I'll take a vote on the matter. All those in favor of accepting her resignation?
Aye.
Aye. Good. And there's a nice letter written to her thanking her, and she get all?
Three signatures.
Mrs. Face is wrong, sorry.
Yeah.
You get Tom's signature sooner or later.
Okay.
Okay. All right, the next item is to accept the winning munici bid, auction bid, for the town sale of the 1996 Pierce Quint chassis fire truck. Munici bid listing 20957, in which we have to vote on it. And I would accept the motion.
It was for?
Yeah, it was for the sum of $5,100. Vote approved. Okay, I'll accept the motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on it? Would you kindly just explain what the munici bid is and how long this has been out there? Just so, this is pretty good, actually.
Munici bid is a municipal auction site where, all across the country, people can put their surplus equipment on for auction. We put the 1996 Pierce Quint on for $1,200, and the winning bid was for $5,100. It's a very interesting site to go look at because there's loads of?
Everything.
Everything. You could think of all it.
Great. All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the matter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. Let me see, do we have something to sign on that, Mary? Or is this?
Just, no. No, I'll send an invoice out.
Okay. Great.
And they're going to take delivery from Connecticut.
Yes. That's where it is.
Yep.
Item five, signature on a purchase and sale for the town purchase of fee interest in the so-called Kelsey property on Ball Hill Road. We need a vote on that matter. This is part of a, of a effort that the Conservation Commission, along with the Commissions of both Northborough and Boylston, are working on to find and protect 500 acres of land up on Mount Pisgah, behind your house, and all this, filling in the gaps. There's already, there's got to be 2,500 acres up there, maybe more. And it's, some of it's connected, a lot of it's in holdings and spaces, so we're trying to tie it all together. For the purpose, and if we do so, we're, we are eligible to try for a million and a half dollar grant from the state. If we pull this all together and we match it, and it can be in-kind matching, like somebody has already donated about twenty, a quarter of a million dollars' worth of property to the thing, then we'll get the bid and we'll have this 500 acres in it. You look at a map of Mount Pisgah, Rack Meadow, Northborough, Boylston, Berlin, we'll have quite a massive area protected up in that vicinity. And that's what this is about. So, this selectman, so I guess I have to have a motion to that effect.
Skip's directions are on the cover of that folder.
Are on the cover?
Yep.
Oh, this is Skip Duggan's. Please have selectmen sign, we're going to make a copy for the contract.
I'll do that.
Return original to Ashley Davies, she's with Sudbury Valley Trustees.
Approve it and sign it, and I'll get the rest.
I think we just need, our, our part is just to approve the purchase and sale agreement.
Okay. And do we approve it?
I make a motion, we approve the purchase and sale agreement for the Kelsey property on Ball Hill Road.
Second. Okay. If, is there any further discussion on the matter?
Nope.
I'll take a vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Oh, nothing signed that, okay. There's only one spot. Okay, item six, by the way, we have a appointment at quarter past seven, which we'll keep. Approval of a, an appointment to the rescue squad. And we have a note from Dennis Bartlett, the chief of the rescue squad, who says, please appoint Eric Manoit from Stowe to the rescue squad as an EMT, and Noah Peduzzi. Oh, and Noah, I thought it was only one, so I could have, and a Noah Peduzzi from Stowe to the rescue squad as a first responder. So we have two appointments, okay. I'd accept a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on that?
Nope.
All those in favor of making these two appointments to the rescue squad, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Okay.
Just one signature suffice? Okay?
Yes.
All right, it is now 7:15, at which time we have a, an appointment with the North, Energy North Group, relevant to change ownership and branding of the Shell station at 265 Central Street. Somebody want to come up and talk about this a little bit? John Wright?
John, Walter Bigfoot, nice to meet you.
Judy Bowman?
Nice to meet you. Basically, what I wanted to do was see if we can get some of the permits in order, some of the local permitting, and also discuss some of our rebranding efforts there. I believe what's going on right now is we're being a little stalled on the signage down there, and we have temporary signs in place. And we're looking to discuss and see if maybe we can get a meeting with the building inspector. I believe that's who we're waiting on.
I don't see any problem with that. What are you looking for us tonight, just to?
I actually was just, I think was coming down to introduce, let you know who we are, what we wanted to do with the site.
Yep.
So what are you doing with the site?
Basically, what we did is we took it from Shell and rebranded it into Mobile.
There we go. Okay.
We're looking to, to replace our road signage and?
So are you going to be a little bit clearer? I have people complain to me that this says, in a very small sign, it says cash price, and at night, it's not lit up, so when they go in, and then they find out that?
It is, we're actually working on that right now.
Okay.
The, the sites that we acquired in all towns had the, had the similar complaint for this small cash-only price on the price sign. We will be a lot more clear on cash credit pricing if we decide to keep it.
Okay.
And we, that's why we're, we really want to get the, the signs updated, cleaned up, much more visible. And, and actually, it was a very temporary thing that we did right now, just covering up some of the shell.
We've been in the, in the permit process around a month now, and we're trying to maybe move it along a little bit so that, so that we can get, so that we can get some license.
Well, have you been in touch with the building inspector?
Yes.
Okay. Well, right now, we have a very, we're very busy because of Highland Commons.
Yep, I've seen that that's quite a project going on up there.
And he's the, he's a part-time building inspector, so?
Yep. I had a, a similar issue with the, with the Health Department, too. I have yet to bump into the gentleman, I guess he's here.
Bill Brookings.
Couple of days a week, or?
Seven to nine.
Yeah.
Super early, yeah.
Okay, so basically, then this is just sort of an introductory meeting, and bring us up to speed on what you're doing.
Nothing, nothing too formal.
That's fine, we appreciate it, that's good, yeah. I noticed a car wash on one of the signs here, are you going to be looking to do that?
We are not at that location.
Okay, this is, oh, gotcha, all right, fine, so that had nothing to do with this.
There was, more interestingly, a liquor thing underneath that.
I know, I was getting to that.
This is an example, that's an example of how the, how the sign would look at night. It's not this sign, it's another sign.
Great. Okay. So then, it's a simple matter, I mean, you're making the, you're rebranding, it's perfectly fine, I don't think we have anything to do with that, do we? The rebranding, and then?
There is a little bit of, over whether these digital signs are a backlit sign or not, as written in the bylaw.
Oh, I see, but I mean, the building, what I was talking about, the selectmen, so the building inspector should take care of all of that. And why do you want to meet with the Board of Health?
The Board of Health is usually, usually in charge of most of the local permitting and, and depends town by town, local permitting in terms of like tobacco, sale of milk, food service.
Okay. I just wondered, I always think about is Title V,水源 water.
Well, we do give out the common vitular license.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
And ice cream on Sunday.
Okay.
Meal stocks?
Yeah, and we do have a meal stock.
Is Larry still down there, by the way?
He is. Would you like him to?
Well, I mean, he's, is he going to stop in here?
He was until Judy told me that, that was supposed to be rescheduled till next week for Tom to be here, too. So he's not going to hang for executive session, because I guess there's not going to be one. My mistake. Do you want him to come in, though? He's available.
Are you having trouble meeting with him, or?
Yeah, that's the basement, sir, we really want to make sure that we get all the permits in place.
Why don't we send them down to go see him?
He's here, he's here, this is the time.
His office is down on the left.
You go down, you'll see a door open on the left, just look in. If you've seen him before, you'll see him sitting there, okay?
Excellent, excellent.
Okay? You'll catch him.
Right. Well, I appreciate you guys taking the time.
Thank you.
Me, too.
All right. Item seven, approval of Guardian Energy slash D O E R, Energy and Environment Department of Energy, what does that state, D O E R?
No, no, it's the Department of Energy Resources.
Resources contracts for Burl Memorial School fans and public safety weatherization, which we have.
These are the green community contracts.
Okay. I leave those, green community contracts.
So I really only want to have two signed tonight, but I'd like to get a vote that I can sign the other two, because Keith is meeting with Guardian tomorrow morning at eight to just solidify a couple details. So I don't want to sign them tonight until I find out that that's exactly what we're going to be doing. But two of them are, one in the apparatus bay, and the one at Burl Memorial can both be signed.
Okay, let's go cover those for us. Seventy Town Hall, eighteen seventy condition project.
We sent them down and Larry came back.
What did you do, cross paths?
Yeah, they're down there now.
This something to do with our bullet house meeting?
Yes, but I'm not going to be here for the rest of the night, unfortunately, because the three of you aren't here, so?
Those guys are going to take about four hours down there.
Maybe more. All right, I'll talk to you again.
Burl Town Hall.
No, no, oh, yeah, that is the one.
You pick the ones we want to vote on. And we'll vote, and then we'll vote on the others with a caveat.
It's these two. So, the first one is for the Burl Memorial School.
Install destratification turbine fans.
So these are, these are little pear-shaped destratification, they're little turbines, and they, they're going to put them up in any of the ceilings that are between 18 and 25 feet high, which is in the gym, the library, the front hallway, the art room, and they'll have a thermostat with them, and they'll go on, in the winter, when the heat rises, they will blow the heat down.
Okay.
And that's the same thing that's being done in this one, on the apparatus bay, they have two fans in there, and one of them is broken, and so it's the same thing, that, that, it's 35 feet high in the apparatus bay, so it'll blow the heat down.
So these are the two you would like to?
Those are the two I would like to.
So I will accept a motion on that.
I make a motion that we approve the green community grants to Guardian, $22,468 for Burl Memorial, and $3,000 for the apparatus bay.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Okay, then I'll take a vote on it. All those in favor of approving of these two projects, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, those two are done.
Okay. So the other two, I would, so the other two projects are?
Incidentally, for anybody interested, Judy has been the go-to person or the leader, the instigator on greening up the town, which is a very important project. A lot of work has been done already, and this is, these are from grants monies you've received, you've applied for and received, and so we're going to continue to implement energy conservation measures throughout the town, and that's what this is all about, so.
So this is for $78,863, this is for this building, building envelope improvements, where it will put weatherization up above the dispatcher's office, up above the main entryway. And the second one is 1870 Town Hall for weatherization, which is putting plastic down in the basement. And we looked at the doors, it said it was going to include windows, but we walked around with Abby, and that's why tomorrow we want to know exactly what they're going to be doing, because of the historical nature of the 1870. So I would like to give, be given approval to approve these contracts pending the outcome of the meeting tomorrow morning.
So is that a motion?
That is my motion.
All right, I will second it. Any further discussion?
No.
I do have some. This is for putting plastic down on the crawl space and vapor barrier.
I think it's actually, it's a vapor barrier.
All right, here's, here's the question I have, Judy, will you be there tomorrow looking at this, or talking with them?
I am going to come in.
All right, because I put vapor barrier down there myself, in probably three quarters or more of the crawl space, and I did it in one morning, and it's pretty heavy gauge stuff, and it's perfectly adequate, except for one small area. And the thing that I don't understand is what, unless they've got some super duper vapor barrier, so I would, you know, inquire, I would, you know, ask them about that.
Well, we did go down and look in the basement, and we didn't see anything in the, when you go down the stairs on the one side, it was, it looked like it was just all dirt.
Okay, this, if this, if this is your Town Hall?
No, that's going to be a contract.
All right. Here we go. Here we go. Here's the Town Hall. Steps are out front.
You go down the stairs.
Go down the stairs here, and here's the boiler room, and something like this. All of this, all up and through here, if there's some space like that, it's all plastic down to about, if you look in this door, you'll see. And it's taped together, it's done.
I didn't look, I have to say, I, I went down there and I didn't go very far, because there's lots of spiders, but they looked over here, and over here is just all dirt. This is where I was looking.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, that's the only spot, and the easiest spot, there's like five foot of clearance, you can get in there and do it. I was crawling up in there, pushing stuff ahead of me, and going down through upstairs.
I will ask him to be more specific.
Ask him to be specific, and, you know, so?
Yeah.
All right?
Yep.
Okay.
That's yours.
So, all right, I will second your, we did, second your motion. All those, I'll call for a vote on the matter. All those in favor of the motion to approve these pending further discussions tomorrow, at which Judy Bowman, Selectman Bowman, will make a decision whether she's happy with the contract or not, and then sign them after that. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on the matter. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Opening bid packages for the public safety study. By the way, let me see, we have an appointment with assessors at 7:30, let's just, I'll get them quickly, and we'll, we'll skip to them as soon as we reach the 7:30.
There's three copies here from Matrix, so you can look in.
They're all the same, right? So we can take these home and?
Well, I think we need to, at least.
If you leave me Tom's, I'll scan both of two, to keep, hold them most comfortably. You have money, have them out?
She wants to take one, keep one, she'll keep Thomas's and scan it in.
Okay.
And then we can get one to the police and fire and rescue.
Okay, sure, all right.
Let me, so this one is from Matrix, and the project cost is $29,000. So you can take one home, or keep one here for Mary, and I'll keep one.
Deadline was Thursday at 1:00.
And everybody made the deadline?
Everyone made the deadline.
And this is from MRI. They did the price proposal separately. It's a single rate. And there's only one book.
We should have asked for at least three copies.
I'll make an order.
Will you call them and tell them to give us?
Can they send us, can they send us a, instead of you making copies, can they just send us a?
PDF.
Yeah.
Yeah.
PDF, okay. That would be a lot easier.
Yep.
So MRI's price proposal is $28,650. I'll give that to you. And this is from Public Safety Strategies Group. So there's three, you can take one of those, there's three of these, actually. She provided one for each chief. Well, it needs to be one for Thomas, too. Nineteen?
Yeah. You were right here, page 17.
Okay. Well, that's a big difference.
How much was that?
$19,000. I guess we could give them these. So here's one for you.
Yep.
Looks like the total cost to me.
I was going to say you could give one to, you could give it to the chief.
Yeah.
So you're going to give it to the chief?
You go.
All right, so I think our plan was to read these and vote on them October 6, except you're not going to be here October 6, so it might get pushed out even further.
I'll be here the next one.
So I guess tentatively, we would, everybody will have a chance to read it, and then we could vote on it October 14, if Thomas is going to be here.
Just noting that you haven't met with P S S G, and I didn't know if you want to have a face-to-face meeting with them?
Well, we couldn't all three of us, anyway, until October 14.
So you want to set this for October 14 decision?
Well, let me look through it and see.
Want to set a date?
I mean, I looked at their qualifications on the internet, P S and S G. So I guess I might have questions, because they don't seem to have any, they seem to have a lot of police department experience, but not a lot of fire or rescue.
Okay. Mark it up for next meeting to discuss the next course of action, maybe? Want to just digest this for a week?
Well, I'm not going to be here for the next two Mondays, and then Walter's not going to be here for the following two Mondays.
So the next time we're all together is the 14th, like you say, of October. Do we put it back on for October 14? Okay.
Yeah. You know, one thing, I strongly believe that references are 90% of making a selection. You can talk to people, and you can get a good salesperson on a lousy company, or you can get a good salesperson on hiring somebody, but if you're really looking back into other people, their references, if their looks are good. So I will read them all, but I'm going to do some references. But I noticed in one of, one of these, either they've listed references, but they, they could be cherry picked, I may?
If you go online and put their names in?
Yeah.
The studies, studies come up, especially with MRI and Matrix, because they've done so many.
In chronological order or something, I'd like to know what the last 10, you know, for example, what the last 10 were, and I would pick out, maybe that's what they gave us, but I would want to do a random look at it. But I'll look into it, and I'm going to look at references very carefully.
Okay.
All right, so that's, there's no vote required on that?
Nope.
Nobody here interested in that? All right, we'll move on. We have an appointment at 7:30 with the assessors for a classification hearing. We'll open it up. Diane?
I'll move up here so I get all the stuff on the table, guys coming up. Different, different spreadsheets this evening.
Right, we don't need 20 pages?
No, we don't. I don't know if I'm writing what all of this is in a moment. Yes, I know. Thank you.
Doesn't mean we get any less paper.
No.
No. Everybody, you want one else?
Okay. Thanks. Okay. So, yeah, well, you're going to have a lot of numbers, so you can make your decisions. So, so for this year, just some highlights on where we are. So the overall value of the town has actually increased by about $18 million. So, the overall, um, value of the town has actually increased by about eighteen million dollars.
And that's all commercial?
That's primarily commercial. I think we had two, two and a half million dollars in new growth in residential, one oh one. We had about the same in condos.
Okay.
So, um, our big, um, commercial increase was about seven and a half million and that was at Highland Commons. Um, another three and a half for the solar farm. And, uh, about two million for the growing room. And, you know, bits and pieces, adding up to a lot of growth. Um, and I think I, I got with you before where our growth was certified in at, get four twenty-six. I think that's on the second sheet.
So, just run that by again, Diane, for fiscal year, what, we had an eighteen million dollar increase in commercial?
We had an overall growth in the town.
Overall?
Right.
Including commercial, residential?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I misunderstood that.
Right, so, um...
For fiscal year?
Yeah, so actually you can see on page two, if you wanted, like, do the comparison.
Okay, okay.
Percentages by, they do percentages by residential, commercial, industrial, personal property. You can see where our shift is, you know, back in two thousand and seven, we were seventy-six percent residential and twenty percent commercial. Today, we're at twenty-four percent residential and almost to thirty, well, we are, have already exceeded the thirty percent of a commercial industrial, thirty, almost thirty-three percent.
So...
It's big.
So, for twenty fifteen, you're saying twenty-nine point fifty-three percent is gonna be commercial?
Yep, and three percent industrial.
Industrial.
Okay.
Twenty percent of personal farm.
Yeah.
So, the industrial is the, is that the solar panels?
That's the solar farm, yeah.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
So, back in two thousand, we were, eh, not, I mean, still a little bit higher in residential, but we were at sixty-nine percent, and that was all from the mall. From Solomon Pond Mall.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
And then Solomon Pond Mall value decreased and house values increased and that's when we went up to what?
The shift, yeah.
The seventy-six percent in housing is almost at the peak of the housing boom.
Right.
And then it collapses and it starts to go, well, obviously in two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, it went down from seventy-five percent to sixty-seven percent.
Yep.
Was that, that was the start of the mall, malls building?
Uh, in two thousand and twelve? No, we had the big adjustment to, uh, that was the revale with Marlboro when they, we had to do that three-year. We had to reduce their value by fourteen million dollars.
Okay.
So, we had a big, um, reduction there.
So, how is Solomon Pond Mall doing?
Well, uh, we were just talking about that. This was the first year we saw, um, a si, there were six vacancies, um, which is kinda standard, but the first time a tenant has actually moved to Highland Commons, which was Lane Bryant, and they had been there since it opened.
No, I heard rumors there's an Apple store going in?
There is an Apple store going in.
Well, that saves it.
Oh, that's, that's one storefront.
Okay.
And Sears, the Sears, Sears and J.C. Penney is still...
Kinda shittering on the edge, yeah. Yeah, okay.
So, you know, it's a delicate balance we deal with and, um, last year, we worked really closely with them on the valuation of the mall, uh, knowing some difficulties they had in getting, you know, renewals for ten years. There, there's a lot more five-year leases and there are several, just one, you know, year-to-year leases. On small, you, you know, if you walk there once in a while, you can see who kinda comes and goes, so.
They should never have kicked out CVS?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, so we, we gotta pay attention to that kinda stuff, uh, going forward. Um, but the value, you know, on the Solomon Pond Mall now is, is good and I don't foresee any problem this year in this valuation.
Okay.
Um, and of course Highland Commons and River Bridge are on the rise. Um, Growing Room was the only, uh, new growth we have down on the rotary for this year.
Who's value there? Two million, two million?
Yeah, yeah, it's right around there. It might have been two four, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's in the ballpark. Um, and I was actually a little conservative on the value because they don't, they didn't have a full year. I mean, they kinda opened in the January and it was, um, a difficult, slow opening. Not a lot of publicity, uh, their marketing team, so I kept it on the low end to give them a year to, to grow the business, so.
When is the hotel gonna be? So, the hotel, when you have this twenty fifteen number, this isn't gonna include any of the...
Nothing, no. No, hotel, um, I just finished a workshop on, on, uh, commercial valuation and, um, the presenter was actually the one who did the feasibility study down there and handles all the ATB cases.
That's convenient.
It was very convenient, he was really good, so. The number that, um, kind of we had in mind and we have on all the forecast sheets is a good number, like fifteen million.
Wow.
So, we're, we're in the ballpark.
Okay.
So, um, single value homes did not go up this year, um, and next year, there will be an increase in the residential valuation, in the first six months of this year, we did see an increase. Um, so, it's kinda, kinda figure on what the rest of the year does. There are a few short sales, a couple of foreclosures out there, but, um, they won't be used for on-site sales, so, we'll see what happens next year, but likely will be increasing the residential values. Um, just some historical, well, we, we choose the split, but if you were to keep the, um, the rate, a single rate this year will be eighteen dollars and ten cents based on the valuation, the new valuation. That's right at the top. Uh, historical tax info, just so you had it in front of you. The tax rates that I have on a few sheets here include, um, I'm assuming you're going to maintain a vote to adopt or continue the adoption of the small commercial exemption. And so, I have factored that into any proposed tax rates. And just the rest of the information on the sheet is just about the tax levy and some, I, you know, increases and decreases on the cherry sheet of note.
So, the tax levy decreased by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars, which means that the tax burden to the town decreased.
Mm-hmm. Right, and there were some, um, uh, some increases on the cherry sheet. Uh, there were some reductions of some charges. The, the big one was the reduction due to charter school tuition. We didn't have any this year. Um, and overlay was decreased by forty-five thousand. Last year, being a revale year, we had it at two hundred. This year, I have it at one fifty-five, which is in the three-year average ballpark, um, which is required now by the DOR.
So, our town budget went up three point two percent, but our tax levy went down by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so this is by using some of the mall money as decreases, I would presume? Right? Our total appropriation increased three point two percent, but our tax levy decreased by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. So, besides these cherry sheet receipts, I believe that they were trying to use, they used some of the public safety, um, mall mitigation money in the budget, if I'm correct.
I don't recall if there were any mitigation monies that...
Were used?
I thought it was just all free cash.
Okay.
I don't know where...
I know they, they, they wanted to make sure that the budget didn't increase at all.
I thought that was, this coming year was the first year we're gonna be using mitigation and they hadn't figured, didn't you speak to you, I mean, she didn't say anything to me. But I don't recall it being factored in to the budget discussion last year.
I guess...
Because we still had the outstanding check that just came in and the one prior, I don't think it made it before to be used for town meeting.
I thought they used that money for the new police officer.
Do you want to go look in the...
The timing, you want, you can see the timing of when this checks?
No, you know what, I mean, it doesn't make...
Where would it have been, where would it have showed up, though?
In the proceedings, when they, when they make a motion.
And it would have said out of mitigation?
Yeah. Yeah, you have to say where it comes from.
I know, but I don't remember any of them coming, 'cause she would've had to have listed that on the recap sheet.
Yeah, I think that's other available funds.
I'm just curious, because...
No, it's, it's, I know, I think I saw them...
But you know what, we can, we don't have to do this now. I can look it up later. I had...
We don't have anything out of other sources, oh, wait a minute, we have a hundred and forty-two other, other available funds, which would've been line four. Page four, column D, page four, column D, sounds like a tax return?
Yeah, well, those are gonna be submitted to the DOR.
That's the recap sheet. Hundred and forty-one. Yeah, it wasn't, I don't know. I'll have to get that to you.
Okay, so, we're, our, our tax levy has decreased.
Yep. Tax levy decreased due to a number of, um, things that were mentioned here. Um, the estimated local receipts, offset receipts increased this year primarily due to, um, construction, so those were monies that had come in and that, that was a big source of the increase. So, when I, all, all of these things get added and subtracted, that's what gives you the decrease, the overall decrease.
Okay.
So, it has some information about the maximum allowable levy, the levy ceiling, levy limit. And in the, kind of, last third of the page, the tax rates on our borders that were certified last year. Cause all of these don't set the rates until January.
So, the commercial rate for Hudson is thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents.
Once last year.
Wow. And Marlboro is twenty-eight dollars.
Right.
Clinton is thirty dollars. Boilston has a single tax rate, and so does Northborough and Bolton.
Yep.
Wow. And our commercial rate is twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. So, we're still significantly below Hudson, Marlboro, and Clinton.
So, we treat our commercial people fairly well?
I would imagine that Boilston doesn't have a commercial rate because they don't have a lot of commercial.
Right.
And the same for Bolton and Lancaster, the only one, um...
Just for cruiser?
Mm-hmm, thirty-five thousand for the cruiser, but I think...
And it said out of miss, out of available funds?
From public safety funds.
Public safety funds.
I think they also used, I would check, but in the budget process, I thought that, um... Other public safety here. That's rescue squad.
Well, I know that... If they keep the commercial rate the same.
Mm-hmm.
You're saying, uh, how do residential values, would, would an average, would go down that?
Yeah, for an average household, three eighty-five.
Yeah.
So, I guess it's, it kinda depends on what they wanna do.
Right, that's where we're just gonna get into a discussion on this other spreadsheet.
Okay.
Right. Alright, so, when we were here at the last meeting, so, and if you look at this spreadsheet, unfortunately, I couldn't make the, the words any bigger numbers, cause I wanted to get off on the page. So, this, this, after the series of Xs, there is the fiscal year fifteen value and these are actually the top fifteen taxpayers that are listed here for commercial.
So, Solomon Pond Mall, Highland Commons, US Bank, oh, Sears.
Sears.
Bill Wheeler.
Sun Ed, that's the...
That's the, uh...
Solar farm.
Solar farm.
Yeah.
Mass Broken Stone.
Mm-hmm.
River Bridge, Pure Hockey, Bisconey, River Bridge.
Pure Hockey will be going on, right?
Worcester Sand and Gravel.
Oh, no, the building's still there.
Still owned by, yeah.
Twenty-five, twenty-seven Central Street, is that the, I don't know, I was gonna say, is that the... Cumberland Farms, which is the gas stations. Earlton Retirement Homes. Do they pay taxes?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yeah.
River Bridge West and Michael Sawyer. Okay.
Okay. So, the first columns is their last year's value. Last year's tax rate was twenty-three ninety-one for commercial and that was their tax bill for fourteen.
Wow.
And the residential rate was sixteen sixty-seven. The average residential value was three eighty-five, one hundred.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, where'd you get that?
Okay, yeah.
Right here. This is last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I was looking at FY fifteen.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll move on to fifteen so you can see where the difference will send.
So, the average residential bill was six thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars.
Yep.
Okay.
So, moving on to the next column, the tax rate, if you maintained the commercial rate at the same as we did last year, twenty-three ninety-one, the residential rate would go to sixteen oh nine.
Okay.
So, the si, the average bill would be sixty-one ninety-six with a difference of two hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-six cents.
So, two hundred and twenty-three dollars less.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
But the, the commercial bill would stay the same?
Yes, and the only reason it changes in any of these was the, uh, new growth. Like in line two, Highland Commons.
Right.
Their value went from eleven million to eighteen, now almost nineteen million, so they're gonna pay four hundred and fifty-one dollars more just 'cause...
So, the, the residential rate goes from sixteen sixty-seven down to sixteen oh nine, which is a decrease of about point six percent, right? No point, so, um, how does that figure out percentage in tax drop and, and reduction? You, you talk about the two hundred dollars off, but what percentage will the tax rate be going down?
Of their bill?
Yeah.
Divide the two twenty-three by six four nine nine. I have my phone. Well, ten percent would be...
Six hundred and forty.
Yeah, so five percent would be three hundred.
Yep.
So, it's...
Four percent?
Three and a half.
Six.
Yeah.
Three point six.
Sense reduction?
Yes.
Okay.
If you wanted to be...
It's a reduction.
Happy, nice, you could lower the commercial rate into twenty-three eighty-six. I did them in five cent increments here this year.
Okay. Alright, so...
This is the only reduction on the list, just in case, if you were going to reduce, just so you can see.
What column you went here?
So, here, see, see that C? CL minus five?
Yeah.
That's commercial minus five cents.
So, if you went to twenty-three eighty-six and lowered the commercial rate by five cents, there'd be a savings at the mall of two thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. The residential r, rate would go to sixteen eleven and they'd still have a two hundred and fifteen dollar savings, the average tax bill.
Well, quite, quite honestly, I don't care if the mall gets two thousand dollars less. I mean, you're losing a hundred and sixty-four thousand at Highland Commons.
Basically, now that we've done this.
I do like this, Rich.
Now that we've done this, I can't, I can't see them complaining if the tax rate stays the same.
No, right, no, no, I mean, that's a gift in itself.
Right, right, absolutely.
Since the portion in Berlin is less than the portion in Marlboro, I mean, the rate, so.
In Hudson, well, if you're at Highland Commons.
Well, oh, yeah, I'm talking mall, so I'm.
You're paying thirty, thirty-four, forty-five in the Hudson half, and in the Berlin half, we're a bargain at twenty-three.
Right.
We're half, no.
Fifty percent less, yeah, wow. Alright, so, on to the next.
Scratch that idea.
Scratch that.
No.
I'm sorry. So, we're on to twenty-three ninety-six, threw that one in there.
So now we're increasing commercial by a nickel.
Increasing, commercial by a nickel. So they'd pay, commercial would pay twenty-six eighty increase, and then, but the residential rate would go down sixteen oh seven for a two hundred and thirty-one dollar savings.
You know, isn't this six of one having the other?
Really?
Yeah.
Really?
I mean, the whole meeting, when you, I mean, we're talking, it's interesting.
Right. Who knows, a nickel here, it's a nickel there, and.
Oh, I know, I know.
I mean, the fact is with, with, the tax.
They dealt something this year.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, if you wanna throw them a whole dollar at them, then I'll have to go back and throw some more numbers.
Throw a dollar at who?
At the commercial.
I doubt it.
I, I, I'm. Well, I'm thinking that because there was no feedback at the last meeting, when we came in to present the numbers, and it was just kind of this.
We apologize to you.
Well, I think we were, I was pretty happy with what you presented, keeping it.
Right, so that's kind of why I said, well, if they're gonna move, maybe they'll move a little in either direction, so that was kind of the sense I got, was that a savings is a savings to the residential ratepayers. And the average home, two hundred, and there's a lot that are more than that, so, um.
Yeah, yep.
There's a lot that are more than that.
I'm fine with keeping it right where it is.
Yeah.
Me too. Yeah.
And then keep the small commercial exemption.
Yeah, we have to review it, that's all, you know.
Yeah, so what I did, actually did this on the other page, was, just so you can see, it was kind of for, just to see where it went, so if you had down at the bottom here, these last four, the mall, Highland Commons, just two residential houses from one average to one extreme. If you went to the single rate of eighteen dollars and ten cents. You could see what happens.
So it increases by nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
No, that would be their new tax rate, they would actually pay three hundred and eleven dollars less at the mall.
Three hundred and eleven.
Thousand.
Thousand.
Yes, but your average home would pay four hundred, almost four hundred and fifty dollars more.
I don't think so.
And one of the higher ends would pay two thousand dollars more.
Leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Leave it the way it is.
And keep the small commercial exemption.
Yep.
I mean, I feel we're at a point to accept a motion on that, um, if you'd like to make one.
I make a motion that we keep the tax rate the same for FY fifteen as it is for FY fourteen, which is twenty-three dollars and ninety-one for residential. Whoops.
Residential would go down a lot.
I'm sorry, twenty-three ninety-one for commercial and sixteen oh nine for residential.
Okay.
And I.
That would be a.
Yeah.
And you're.
I second that.
And, and, well, can I just say, and keep the small commercial exemption?
Don't you?
Okay, so, um, let me just, do you wanna vote on that first, before I just tell you what the small commercial exemption amount is?
No, so anyway, I second that, is there any discussion?
Okay, so, you can discuss. We're just, we're going to be, should we have ninety-three eligible parcels?
Is this more or less than?
It's less, about eleven, it's either eleven or thirteen, I'm sorry.
Less than last year?
Less than last year, um, and we're, so we're exempting.
One, I'm sorry, how many parcels do we have?
Of commercial?
You just said, how many?
Oh, ninety-three this year.
Ninety-three, okay, thank you.
Eligible parcels.
Okay.
Which means the value is less than a million dollars, they have ten or less employees.
Okay.
Um, and so we're exempting or shifting a million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars to be spread over the commercial industrial ratepayers.
But that still leaves them with a flat.
Yes.
It's still, it's still the same tax amount as last year?
Yes, yes, yep, and.
Just so people listening understand that, Diane, so that's, you know, we've given this break to our small commercial businesses in town.
Yes.
That has to be picked up, who pays for the rest of that?
The other commercial.
The commercial.
The other bigger commercial, okay.
Yeah.
And it all stays in the commercial, doesn't.
Industrial.
Drip over into residential or just account?
It does reduce the, because not, it does not get shifted to personal property. The personal property tax rate is twenty-three fifty-three. No, I'm sorry, twenty-three sixty-one.
Okay.
And the excess levy capacity?
Well, just, just so that, now, so we got our, um, commercial rate, which was twenty-three.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Yep.
And then there are ninety-three small commercial enterprises that we're gonna.
File for a ten, file for the.
Drop, which is ten percent?
Ten percent.
Then that takes.
Of their commercial value.
Okay, so that then is spread back over the other commercial, which means.
And industrial.
I'm just talking theoretically, so the twenty-three ninety-one actually goes up.
No, it's, that's, it's already built in.
It's already built in, okay.
Built in, yeah.
Okay.
I just thought you might wanna know what we shifted in order to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get a few questions every year on, on this ten percent reduction, especially if it's, especially if it's a combined residential and commercial type situation, you know, we've tried to take and, and, and figure out, you know, who's seventy-five percent commercial and twenty-five residential, fifty-fifty, and then we go down to.
Ninety-ten for home offices.
Ten, ninety-ten for small, small, we get some questions on, people questioning, well, gee, you know, I don't think I'm fifty-fifty, you know? But it hasn't been too awful that, you know, we deal with a few every year, we try to, try and work it out and be as fair as we can, um, you know, so. But that's, that's where the questions come in on, on some of this, is that percentage that we try to.
They think, they still think they're classified as residential.
Yeah.
But they're doing business out of their house, not paying rent outside of.
Yeah.
Home anywhere, they, many of them have site plan approvals, and so, and short of having everybody apply and doing every single one of them, one at a time, we did a policy statement as the Board of Assessors, like several of the other communities we talked to prior to coming to you when you split the tax rate, so.
We either had a hundred percent, which is the major group.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We do seventy-five, twenty-five, fifty-fifty, and ninety-ten, we have any, well, we have some twenty-five, seventy-five the other way.
We have twenty-five, seventy-five, yeah.
So you kind of sit.
Yeah, based on what kind of business they're doing and how much they work out of their property, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
For instance, Pleasant Street, you have them a couple there with their landscaping and stuff, we got them.
Yeah, yeah.
Some have more trucks than others in Uta Lautaua, yard areas.
You know, so you do get some questions, well, gee, you know, I, I, you know, I do have a business here, but I'm only using twenty-five percent, you know? But yet they're getting deliveries every day, and employees are coming and going, so we just try and, try and work it out the best we can.
But the bottom line, yeah.
The bottom line is, a lot of them don't know there's a credit on their bill.
Bottom line is, virtually any commercial.
Still don't know what it's for.
Or industrial activity in Berlin would move to a neighboring town, the tax would go up.
You've been a good newbie, we'll give you two percent.
It would go up, their tax would go up.
Well, a lot of them, their mortgage companies pay the bill, so they never see the bill, and.
That's true.
They don't pay attention to it.
I just brought it up just to, just to let you know, that's the only area that we kind of have some meetings on and discussions with residential people.
Still some issues with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it hasn't been outrageous.
Yeah.
So the excess levy capacity is five hundred and forty-four thousand eighty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. Wow, this is what you're leaving on the table. Five forty-four oh eighty-nine point five two.
Well, we had a lot of excess levy capacity when Solomon Pond Mall was built, and gradually, when we hit that big slump in two thousand, it slowly got used up, so keeping excess capacity as excess is always a good thing. Gives you a, it's like having a savings account.
Alright, um, I mean, we could talk all night on this, fascinating, fascinating, but, um.
You have things to do.
Yeah, so we just, you vote on it, I know I interrupted a little bit also.
Right now.
Yep.
So, alright, a motion been made and seconded, um, to actually leave the tax rates for all sectors, commercial, industrial, residential, personal property, virtually the same, and, and retain the ten percent.
Small business exemption.
Small business exemption.
I would just disagree with one minor.
What?
The residential rate last year was sixteen sixty-seven, this year it's sixteen oh nine.
Oh.
The commercial rate changed the same.
And then based on that.
Right.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
The residential rate goes down.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just vote.
Just need signatures down the bottom.
Today's the eighth?
Yes. Can you copy, you signed a copy, or do you want to go to the. Well, wait till she notarizes it, and then I'll give it to you.
Okay, thanks.
And actually, you'll probably have it tomorrow afternoon, it's all certified and a copy to you. This is just the, I just thought I'd bring that copy in there, so.
We can keep this?
Yeah. You'll get it, buy it, you know, anyways.
There's no.
Back to Diane.
Okay.
Yep, thank you, I'm just gonna have Eloise do her magic, and we meet with DOR tomorrow morning at nine, and, uh, we should be good to go.
Well, and then the tax bills can come out, and we'll be all so happy.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
That's happening tomorrow night. Bye, thank you.
Okay, um, we have, okay, the executive session is no longer going to be held. We had two appointments, and that's it for the night, so moving on, um, we did number eight.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Update on the Bullet House project.
I just, there's people postponing, Larry, so.
Oh, yeah.
We're postponing, it's next meeting.
Yeah, you're supposed to get notified.
Yes, yes, and you're not gonna be here?
Well, last week we talked about this, and because Thomas couldn't be here this Monday night.
Right.
We were gonna do the tax thing, because that couldn't be pushed.
Yep.
And he's gonna be there next week, so he was gonna be doing the executive session with Larry.
And you won't be here?
And I won't be here.
Okay, so it won't be a full board in any event?
No, but we knew that.
Okay.
Oh, and the poll hearing too.
Okay, um, number nine, update on the Bullet House, Larry just dropped this here. Can, um, you, um, scan this in and email it to all three of us?
What is this one? Bullet House? Uh, yeah, you just, you just got it tonight?
Yeah.
Yep.
We can, uh, look at it over the week. Number ten, approval of administrative secretary to attend AVCC.
I don't really know a lot about it, other than Alcohol Beverage Control Commission.
Oh, I thought it was a triple A for, to double A.
Don't worry.
Double A, but, okay.
After you go to AVCC.
Okay, approval of admin, administrative secretary to attend the ADCC, licensing presentation on September eighteenth, closing the selectman's office for the day.
Cause it's an Auburn, and it's the whole day, my whole day.
I'll accept a motion of that effect.
So moved.
I'll second it, um, any discussion?
Nope.
My, I just have one question, what do you, what is this about?
So right now, we, you have all your licenses.
I'm sure. Yeah.
And I guess the state wants to receive them in a different format now, they want you to do e-licensing, they want you to confirm back to them.
Alright, it's just a different way of, alright, alright, fine. Um, if there's no further discussion, the chair will accept a vote on the matter, all those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Eleven, discussion, refers school committees request for an appointment to discuss regionalization set for October sixth at eight P M. I won't be here.
Okay, so let's change that then.
Well, they.
I would like.
Wanted that date, okay, I will tell them that then, so we're gonna move it?
Cause I'm, I'm home on the seventh, I believe it is, I come back, you know?
I advise them that you would not be here, and they still wanted to be set for the October sixth agenda, but I will tell them back that this should be moved.
Well, every time I change.
Yeah, cause I am on the representative to the school board.
Yep.
And I would like to know, if there's another way that I could do it, whether it's drop in the C D V.
Do you wanna have a special meeting, do you think that this warrants a special separate meeting?
If it's, whoever, if, I'm flexible, alright?
I'm unclear what it is that they actually want with this, because they, I mean, we had to ask to get the regionalization study, they never just, you know, to me, they should've sent that out, we should've put it up, it should, it should be public knowledge, what that report says. And if they wanna have a meeting, then I don't mind having a selectmen's meeting, but I want other people who might be interested in this, it shouldn't just be the selectmen, I mean, it's a town. So, yeah, maybe we make another night, and just have that as the agenda.
So you want clarification on what it is?
Yes, ask them what it is they wanna discuss with us.
This, um, as I read the article in the paper, and it's not always thorough and totally accurate, but it looks like the state is putting out grants for incentives to look into this type of thing, so you apply for the grant. I'm just wondering if it came from within, whether these people are sitting around thinking we should look at this?
Well, the state was offering grant money to study regionalization, that's why I think this got done. I mean, this is, this has gone by, like, what, four or five times, we've already gone through this, and from what I read in the report, there were a lot of issues in there that I would have a hard time accepting, like not having an equal vote on the school committee, but. Yeah, ask them what, what it is they want, what they're looking for, because if it's gonna be like a public hearing.
What is their goal for the meeting, why do they wanna do it, what's the purpose? Alright. Item twelve, request for selectmen to consider resolution vote on opposition to the pipeline project. I put this on there, and Bolton has done it, um, there should be three people here when we do this though, so I, did, you have a copy of it? And you emailed all the selectmen on it.
I think you have Mary Ann, what, Mary Ann's forwarded to this office today.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Okay.
Um, so it would be in that pile somewhere?
Yeah, keep flipping in there, it has a yellow tag hanging out from Mary. Yeah, that's the whole school thing, this, so this came from Mary Ann today, I didn't see if it exactly apes Bolton's or not.
Okay, well, um.
I mean, you haven't even had a chance to look at it, so.
How about, how about if you scanned that, so, to send us both the Bolton one, which I think you did already.
Yep, I did send Bolton, and.
And this also.
I will send both.
Mary Ann works hard, you know, I, I wanna give her due consideration for the effort she puts into this.
Well, I don't have any problem with, if you take a vote on this in the next two weeks, I am all for it, so.
Okay.
You and Thomas could.
Well, you wanna take a vote, I'm for it myself.
No, I don't have a problem voting for it at all.
Let's take a vote for it.
Maybe you wanna read the language, or?
I read the Bolton one, I mean.
You don't, not ready to do, read, do Mary Ann's though, tonight?
Does it differ from Bolton that much?
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to compare it, it only came in today's email.
Well.
I mean, you can put it off to next week and.
Alright, let's, let's.
Or we can take the time and read it right now.
Alright, let me, let me read it, but we don't have to compare, well.
Well, I don't have a copy or.
I can't remember everything of Bolton, but, um.
Is there a second one in there? No, well, when you're done, then I can read it.
Well, alright, whereas Kinder Morgan has proposed.
Or he can read it out, well, yeah.
New thirty-inch high-pressure gas pipeline through northern Massachusetts is part of the northeast regional direct project here in Aftacall, the project, and whereas the project also proposes new twelve-inch high-pressure natural gas pipeline known as the Worcester Lateral to be installed in Berlin and neighboring towns, connecting the pipeline with a location on the Worcester-Shoesbury line, and whereas Kinder Morgan has identified properties in Berlin. And whereas Kinder Morgan has identified properties in Berlin that it intends the Worcester Lateral to cross, but has declined to provide the town of Berlin with detailed current information on the exact route. It is proposing, and whereas, it appears that Kinder Morgan is proposing that the Worcester Lateral cross some of the most scenic, historic, environmentally sensitive farmland and open space in Berlin, including conservation land. You got a copy of that?
It's reading the same as Bolton.
Okay.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm down three where, four whereas's.
Right.
Going on to the fifth one, it says, whereas, a high pressure gas line by its nature carries a potential for leaks, ruptures, or devastating explosions costing untold damage to property and lives. And whereas, the project and the Worcester, the project, which is the big one up north, the thirty inch one, and the Worcester Lateral, which is the twelve inch one, will destroy large amounts of forest, wetlands, conservation land, and farmlands, and require maintenance in perpetuity of a thirty to fifty foot right of way. And whereas, the Worcester Lateral will adversely affect property values, adversely affect residents livelihood, and otherwise negatively impact the integrity of the town's scenic character. And whereas, the our energy, I don't know how, why that reads, whereas, the our energy challenges a better address. I think that, okay, whereas, our energy challenges a better address through investment in energy conservation measures as well as green and renewable energy solutions. And, let me just cross out that. And whereas, Berlin and our neighboring communities have adopted comprehensive master plans, zoning bylaws, wetland bylaws, and other land use controls to provide for the orderly development of our communities and the conservation and protection of our communities for future generations to come as good stewards of the land should. And whereas, the elimination of the environmental threats to our forests and streams from the impervent development is the fundamental purpose for the adoption of our land use controls and master plans. And whereas, Berlin and our neighboring communities have publicly and privately set aside large tracts of land and restricted their development for conservation and open space purposes as part of their master plan. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen of Berlin hereby declare they stand in opposition to the Kinder Morgan Energy Direct Project and to the Worcester Lateral and stand in opposition to any and all similar projects that may later be proposed and stand in opposition to any effort to locate the Worcester Lateral within Berlin's borders. And will participate in and provide comments to any meetings held by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, with regard to the Worcester Lateral that question the need for the new gas pipeline, including the Worcester Lateral, and that identify alternative routes outside of Berlin. And will seek to intervene in any proceedings before FERC, which seeks to cert, seeks a certificate of public necessity and convenience with respect to the Worcester Lateral and oppose Kinder Morgan's application. And be it further resolved that the Board of Selectmen of Berlin hereby call upon our state and federal legislators and executive branch officers to enact legislation and to take any other such actions that are, as are necessary to oppose such energy projects that go against our commitment to public safety, our environment, our economic well-being, and sense of community. Did you say?
Yep, except for a couple, a little bit wording at the very, very end about they have, will participate in and provide comments with regard to Worcester Lateral that question the need for the new pipeline and that identify alternative routes. And there's a little bit different wording in there, where they put in gas pipeline.
Will participate in and provide comments to any meetings held by FERC.
Saying that they had scoping meetings.
Oh, scoping meetings.
I don't know, held by FERC.
Well, any, any meeting includes, all, that's all includes of scoping.
With regard to the Worcester Lateral.
Yeah.
That question the need for the new pipeline.
Okay.
And yours says the gas pipeline.
I had gas pipeline.
And that identify alternative routes outside of Bolton.
I mean, it's gonna be specific, should be natural gas pipeline, but gas pipeline, that has to be that, okay.
Well, I don't have a problem with agreeing to that.
Let's do the Bolton one. I suspect they, they had council look at it, the selectmen have all voted on it, they're all good.
Well, the only difference was what I just said.
Yeah.
Everything's the same except for that piece at the end there.
Okay.
You wanna take Bolton's language verbatim?
I would take the scoping out because I would think will participate.
Any meeting, okay.
Scratch it and I can.
I think any meeting gives you more latitude.
Well, then let's do, let's do Mary Ann's.
Do Mary Ann's, just leave Mary Ann's the way it is.
Now, this, this whereas, here it says, whereas, the energy challenges, whereas, our energy challenges.
Yes, and this one says whereas, our energy challenges.
Okay, so scratch the the right after whereas, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the eight.
Eight whereas.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if she sent it as a word document.
I, I've got it here, I'll give you.
You said do a pen and ink?
Well, we can sign the last page and you can make the corrections to the front page.
Okay.
I circled gas.
Oh.
Did that kill it?
Why don't you print out the second page and, and we'll have a clean copy and we can sign that once we take a vote.
Sure.
I make a motion that we approve the, the resolution about the natural gas pipeline, the Kinder Morgan gas pipeline.
How about as submitted?
As submitted.
Okay, and I second that. And any further discussion? Then I'll take a vote on it. All in favor of issuing this to Kinder Morgan, say aye.
Aye, well, I think we should send it to our federal and state officials too.
So all the legislators, send it back to Bolton?
Yeah.
Send it back to Bolton, send it back, send it to, send it to who we say in here, which is, yeah.
You want senators too or just?
Yep, senators too.
And copy Mary Ann.
State, state and federal legislatures and executive branch officers. Well, you can ask Bolton who they sent it to.
Yep.
They might have a better list of the FERC group and the.
I do have this as a word document. If you wanna, right afterwards, we can just change those words and then I'll have you sign. Okay. Which whereas is it? The eight? And what's the word change? Is that the only word change?
Just taking the.
Just take out the, okay.
I just kind of a couple letters from Mary Ann here. The Roseberries are Berlin, as far as I'm concerned, no matter where they live. Um, whilst she's getting that, well, we need a note taken on that.
Richard Kinder will get four hundred and sixty-seven million dollars in dividend payments if he consolidates four related pipeline companies.
That was in the article in the Globe three or four weeks ago. If he wanted to donate a third of that for us buying land or something. I'd look at, take a second look at this. Well, we can discuss this. Well, no, we can't. We'll wait till she's here, take a minute.
Okay, so.
Okay, do you want me to hold it for Tom or just get it up now with the two zero vote?
And I guess you, I don't know, I guess it would probably look better if we had all three signatures.
I'm sure Tom will sign it.
Yeah.
I know, for the sake of it, I'll get it out now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, when does he do back, Mary?
I'm not entirely sure.
He'll be here next Monday.
He's, yeah. I'll ask.
Well, it'd be nice to have his official signature on it, just, just make sure.
I haven't mastered it yet.
You haven't mastered it yet? My wife can sign my name better than I can sign it myself. Okay. Item thirteen, discussion regarding foreclosure notice for number seven, eight, and thirteen Village Lane from the Kumski and Levine, Livin, LLP Attorneys at Law via Certified Mail to the Board of Selectmen, Notice of Mortgage Foreclosure Sale. Units number seven, eight, and thirteen of Mosaic Commons Cohousing condominium located at seven, eight, thirteen Village Lane, Berlin, Massachusetts. Dear Mr. Andrew pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter two forty-four, Section fourteen, as amended, enclosed as a copy of the notice of the mortgagee's sale of real estate, very truly yours. Okay, David Foss, Esquire. And I don't have to read this whole thing, right?
When is this sale supposed to be?
Sale, let me see, five, eight, two, three.
I don't quite understand how this is working, since those were subsidized units.
Yeah.
I thought that they couldn't sell them at market rate prices until they went through this whole Z B A thing to change the forty B, cause it was built under forty B.
Should we ask Joel's opinion on this thing?
Well, I don't know what we need to do. I thought they were. So it was, I said, my assignment of mortgage dated the seventeenth of twenty fourteen. Sold at public auction September twenty-fourth at eleven A M.
Sold.
To be sold.
Oh, to be.
At public auction beginning eleven A M. on September twenty-fourth.
Yeah, how does that affect their status? Are these units, not all units?
These were forty Bs, all.
These are forty Bs?
Yes. These are the, the final three forty B units that they could not sell.
Okay, I remember that's when Beazey came in, didn't we?
I thought that they went, they had to go, they went to the Z B A? I'm not. I'm not sure, but these were, these were subsidized forty B housing, so.
Well, yeah, right, what are we doing? This is almost just a notice to us, right?
Yes, it's just a notice.
What action could we take? We could take action to make sure this is all meets standards and we don't lose three forty B units.
We're gonna lose them, we knew that. We voted.
I remember that, yeah.
To, to take them out of forty B.
Right.
But then this whole thing about they, the lender was gonna foreclose on them came up. And I'm not sure if we have to do anything at all. It doesn't request that we do anything, it's just a notice telling us that.
Well, I'm tempted to just file it as a notice on one hand, on the other hand, maybe the.
Sawyer Hill is Wednesday, September tenth at eight o'clock, a public hearing.
For the Z B A?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
To amend the comprehensive permit from twenty-five percent to twenty and a half percent total units available in perpetuity at affordable rates, eighty percent of the median family income. Uh, applicant seeks the amendment in anticipation of lender foreclosure of three affordable units which will void the standing lip agreement between the town, Sawyer Hill, L C, and D H C D, a D, D H, let me say, a C D, that should be the word.
What time is that at? Eight?
Eight o'clock this Wednesday.
Okay.
So this will be, okay, so this goes before the Z B A, that.
This is in anticipation of lender foreclosure.
Yeah.
So I don't think we need to do anything right now.
With Lynn on there, I think it'll be.
If granted, the amendment will permit a new lip.
Yeah.
So the projects remaining affordable, fourteen, remaining affordable units may continue in the town's housing inventory.
All right, next item. And I don't see anything in here, but I read what you had sent around, Mary.
That email, that's about it, actually.
Okay. Discussion regarding creation of policy for fees for the adoption of animals from the animal control officer. I would like to have the officer come in, so I understand this a little bit better. And.
Yeah.
How do they dispose of these animals? How are they treated while they have them, you know, so.
Just so you know, every time Ju- June gets a bill that I submit for reimbursement of the animal or the dog officer's expenses, she asks, have you checked with Helen to make sure that it's not related to one of her animals, but it's related to a stray she picked up? When I called Helen on this bill for eighty dollars to Hudson Veterinary Clinic, she said, not only is that a stray, but it's a stray that I've adopted out. So June has asked in the past before, do we recoup those costs that we've put out for these strays when they're being adopted? As shelters have them, they'll, they'll pass on the expense to the adopting family, but do you wanna have that here? Is there an in-town first priority for people who want the dogs or cats? How are they advertised?
Did you, anybody ask Helen if she has any of those answers?
I tried to ask her today, but her voicemail is perpetually full and she doesn't have email. So I, I try to leave, sometimes she sees on caller ID that I called her and she generally calls right back, but.
Well, this more or less has to be kept on a to-do list, because I, I really think we need to understand this a little better before we can go voting on policies.
I'll move it.
I can put on next week's agenda, or surely hear from you before then.
Enough time for next week to do it? I mean, is there?
Well, just for.
We don't have a full agenda, obviously. You're gonna put it on next week?
Well, Judy's away. I can pipe it out further if you'd rather.
You can make big decisions about dogs and that.
Okay, hi, sir. You.
Okay, I'll put it on next week.
Yeah.
You have the twenty second too.
Get the ball rolling, yeah. Well, we won't be making decisions. We'll bring her in, talk to her, see what she has, if we need information.
Eighteenth is Thursday.
Have her go and get it. Have her retrieve it.
Oh, yeah, I take it back, I take it back.
Okay.
So next week, they coming on? She, she coming in?
I'll ask.
All right. Okay, let's move on to miscellaneous correspondence. Number one, monthly department report. Do you wanna look through these and pick out what you wanna look at, Mary? I mean, Judy, you want me to just go through every one of them?
I don't, I don't have department reports from our public safety.
Okay.
If, it, key is dated August twenty-ninth, the two letters from the Historical Commission regarding both the Brick House and separately the Red Wooden Barn for one hundred River Road West, the demolition.
Yeah.
The six month delays for both of those applications.
Okay. All right.
What happened with the water heater replacement? What's the account? Did, did we ever?
Get a final sum, cause you approved up to ninety-five hundred.
But I'm, I'm also saying, thinking about paying for it. We were discussing that it should come out of reserve fund trend.
Now versus at the end of the year.
Yeah.
I don't have an update on that.
Okay.
I can, I can ask, you wanted them in here, yes?
Well, it would probably be good to talk about.
June's looking at it over the policy, exactly, okay. You all wanna be here for that?
Well, you can go ahead without me. What's the email on eighty Crosby Road?
Thanking Larry for moving on it.
Oh, did he find the ball, Anderson? What did he do? Do you know what the results were?
I, Mr., I'm not, Mr. Anderson says there's less vehicles there and there seems to be less activity.
Okay.
What is the superintendent's email about Greenacre School impact?
She wants to know what the projected impact on the schools will be from that project.
I don't know that we have a projection.
Well, I could've passed it on to Mark, but I didn't.
I would ask, I would ask the Z B A because it's a forty B project.
I think they were copied on it, but I'll, I'll send it to Z B A.
What do you think the, um, river bridge will do? That's a fifteen percent increase in population when that's done.
Well, I mean, if, if, I think that they've always said that houses, two and three-bedroom houses pull in more kids than one and two-bedroom apartments.
Yeah.
So it'd be interesting to see what the Green Acres thing. Hmm, let's see.
There's a W is the Bolton Town Administrator sent us a notice that there's a September eleventh pipeline meeting this Thursday.
And what is this pipeline meeting gonna be about?
I don't know. The selectmen already resolved against it, so I'm not, I think it's just mobilization.
And they've already had the same thing we had, having Kinder Morgan come out.
Yes.
You know, I thought I would have tended just to let them know, you know, provide moral support and let them know we are interested.
I can look at the rest of this stuff after. I don't see anything else in here.
The Wolves are asking in double G what it takes to formally file a complaint and whether their emails constitute a complaint.
Yeah, they need to write, uh, write to Larry and make an official complaint because he is the zoning officer.
Which one, which number is double G?
Double G.
You know, let me ask you. If somebody, why does it have to be put in writing? Um, our building inspector is aware of it?
It needs to be put in writing. Well, you, you need to, you can't just talk in a meeting and then presume that it's not official until we put it into writing. So all they need to do is write a letter to Larry and that should start the-
All right, what, where I'm coming from, if somebody calls me up and said, Walter, there's something going on near the wetlands at such and such location, I don't say put it in writing. I go look at it.
Yes, but you also won't have a lawsuit where you need to produce everything. And the zoning, the zoning part becomes, can, can, become very contentious. So if you have a paper trail, at least the town is protected.
I mean, I, is that- Yeah. All right, I buy that. Okay.
Advise them proactively or just?
Tell them to send us a detailed-
Tell them to send it to Larry, not to the Board of Selectmen, because we have absolutely no purview in that area.
Only through our appointment of Larry, so just copy us that though.
Oh, so what happened with special town meeting? Do we have a date?
They were going to go to the planning board, which means tomorrow night to look for, um, their backing on an article. Otherwise, the selectmen said that they were not gonna put, put forward a warrant without it going through the planning board, right, on an article for drive-through? Is that what you're talking about?
I never said. They wanted someone to, they wanted someone to back them up.
Yes.
And we told them to go to the planning board, but if the planning board doesn't back them up, I'll still have a special town meeting.
You would?
Well, I, yeah.
If they can get a citizen's petition, but I won't back them up. I'll tell you that.
They don't have to have anybody back them up. They just have to have a request for a special town meeting and we okay it.
You would move, uh, I thought that was, you said the opposite, not you per se, but the board said opposite, which was you weren't gonna put forward a warrant on a zoning change when it wasn't cleared by the planning board, or at least-
Well, the planning board doesn't have to back it to clear it.
Just be presented the issue. They can still vote against it, but you might forward the warrant if they wanna pick up the bill on it.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess we'll find out after tomorrow night what the planning board intends. Do you want, do you-
I guess. Well, I, I was under the assumption at the last planning board meeting I was at is that they, they're not going to, um, support it.
Yeah, all right.
I mean, they're the ones who said that they wanted some board to back them up. We never said, we never said anything about them having to have that, but they want somebody to sponsor them. But I'm not gonna sponsor them and I don't think the planning board is gonna sponsor them.
I don't think they-
So you wouldn't endorse a town meeting going forward on that point?
I, I would still go for a town meeting.
We endorse the town meeting, not necessarily what they want to vote on.
Okay, so it could be no recommendation by the planning board, no recommendation by the selectmen, or a negative recommendation, but still put it forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess if it went on, it was announced the planning board would hold a hearing in a hurry on it.
Oh, they, they have a hearing requirement. Does that get rid of October dates? That gets rid of October dates, kind of, then, doesn't it?
Yeah, they would.
Well, the longer we wait, the farther this gets pushed out because Eloise has a bunch of stuff she has to do too.
Yep, with elections and-
With elections.
She gave me those dates about a month and a half ago. I had asked the principal of the school if the school's available. No answer yet. Barry said whatever, and I, I'd have to probably recheck with Eloise on the dates.
What did we, when they left, what was the impression we left with them? Were they?
Go see the planning board.
They should go to the planning board. Okay, good. Then the ball's in their court.
Yep.
And I'm, I don't think they, any dunning them with a call will make any difference. I mean, they want to do this thing, that's their motive. If they do it, they do it. If they don't.
Our motive is that we get a-
Get a free town meeting.
Free town meeting, and we have a lot of articles we can put on it.
Yep. The, the owner came by after your meeting and basically was just trying to figure out what it needed to do to move it forward. I said, they told you to go see the planning board, so.
That's it. Good. Okay.
I'll check in with the planning board, see.
I don't see anything else on miscellaneous that, uh, the L S D, I mean. Okay, anything executive session that-
You wanted a written confirmation from the state that they waiver on how Mass Works bills get paid.
I saw that.
Yeah, I just want, it's in there as miscellaneous.
Yeah.
That's, um, double O?
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that email.
No, that's actually double Q.
Walter went to the groundbreaking.
Yes.
I had him laughing in this rolly in the aisles.
Heard you spoke.
Everybody was serious and then. So I told him about some of the little anecdotes down in that valley when I was growing up, things that went on. It was like, it was like Sturridge Village, between the Tyler farm, the Reese farm. I mean, we used draft horses. We used, you know, went out and worked by hand, bales and bales of hay. Danny Tyler was a Princeton graduate in anthropology and, uh, he, he was, he'd be like a twin brother to Henry David Thoreau, that was his philosophy. And he was good. He just, you know, he was my mentor, more or less. That's why I was so backward, or forward, whatever. And then the Reese was the same way. I remember turning the butter churn, making butter, you know?
Oh, my gosh.
Slaughtering hogs and doing all that, yeah.
Love to put him in, uh, what's it called? Is that Survivor? Survivors?
Yeah, yeah.
Naked and Afraid.
I have a minor sin, I fool.
What happened?
Can I get you to sign the L A five page again?
I guess so.
I need to change the excess levy capacity number.
Okay.
So the twenty-three ninety-one and the sixteen oh ten, sixteen oh nine page that I prepared last time was the one I prepared for two weeks ago for our other meeting. And June had changed the two fifty-three to two hundred in the local receipts, the anticipated local receipts.
Okay.
So I never went back and printed out the same page, so all the numbers were the same except for the excess levy capacity at five forty-two, seven seventy-one, fifty-two.
Okay.
And I'll have Eloise sign that in the morning. Just here. Everything else is the same.
At least you got it. Instead of getting it sent back to you and then you'll-
No, it wouldn't have got sent back. I remember doing, I had to run over to Val's house one year and say, oh, my God, what did we do here? Where there was, what happens is the, um, when it calculates everything, it only changes the first line. It doesn't change the second line. It prints it twice. So it says here, it's been calculated right here.
Yeah.
And then it says, we've been informed to that it, it is what it is.
Uh.
It doesn't change this number. Only changes the top one. And I, you know, it's just like when you print ten of them, different, you know, every time you go back in, you gotta change all the factors and it makes sense.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Did you change the number that they agreed to?
I didn't write that.
Okay.
So, yeah. I do, I care. Don't say it.
I'm only kidding. Is that, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
She does care.
I really don't. It's okay though. I'll get your copy of the fully executed version tomorrow.
You will, tomorrow morning, as soon as she signs that.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, well, quick question. You don't, unless, maybe I shouldn't, but there is an executive session put down here, but I think, I mistakenly believe that, that Tom was gonna be here. There is no update, then you all would have no update to discuss.
No, we would not.
Okay. Couple of quick things. Oh, all right.
You're on camera. Do you, is it executive session?
No, no.
Okay.
So where are we with I T. at this point?
Did we get anybody?
You know, you would've been good to grab her right now because she's still running the gauntlet on launching G O T M S. I think they're working it out though slowly.
How? You went through that, right?
I did.
How, so tell us a little bit about it.
It's gonna be really great.
Uh-huh.
When you create all the town-specific pulldown menus and labels and all the rest of this stuff. But it's gonna take work to get there and just timing-wise, it is what it is. Larry's running straight right now. And to take him off of what he's trying to keep up with, when Julie is trying to get up to speed, they, they advise that what they do in other communities is they do it by committee. People will all get together and define terms and create the pulldown menus that you use on G O T M S if you're the end user. Everyone would need to take a moment from what they're doing to get together by committee and agree. Cause I don't think, Larry could probably do it all by himself, but I don't know if he has the bandwidth. The other two inspectors probably have some feedback, but I don't know that they're, they're gonna get involved in the technical pieces of it. Diane's the assessor, but she's quarterbacking the project. So two things, Marlboro has had this for ten years and they've invited people to go over and take a look and to see how Marlboro does it, which would be very helpful. And I think the same extension, uh, offer has been given by Bolton and their I T. person has offered to help with some patchwork, uh, assistance on getting us up and running here. But you still need to have local decisions made here about how it's gonna work here.
Okay, on, with respect to what you just said there.
Yep.
Um, yeah, they've gotta invest some time now, and so the idea if they take, I mean, you're right, Larry's right up to here.
Yeah.
At this particular point, he said, I don't have time, I don't have time, but he's gonna take time and hopefully we'll recoup that in fairly quickly if this helps him out, right?
I don't think it's gonna give him that much time if he uses it.
You don't think so?
The only thing you're gonna lose is you're not gonna, we're already collecting the three percent surcharge from everybody as of July one, even though stuff isn't becoming electronic yet. So people are pushing back against that at the window, but it is what it is, cause it's already started, collecting the three percent. I really don't see that he has, my own opinion is I don't think he has the time, does not have the time to keep up with what he's supposed to be doing now. In addition to ramping up Julie, which is taking time away from me and him, but she's coming along. She's great, but there's a lot. And, um, it comes at a time that he's straight out and you all have already talked about whether or not you need to do something about his hours mid-year.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that'll be next week.
I know, but what I'm saying is his plate runneth over now, or his cup, he is-
Yeah. Okay. All right, um, let me see what's on.
Did you get anybody who, um, replied to the I T. stuff as the committee?
This is a, no one. If you asked for a stakeholder participation, I think you'd have stakeholder participation. But there was a clear directive that there would be no town employees on the study committee. Town employees may or may not have the expertise, but it would be nice if you had some community people who have that. No one's answered.
Okay.
It really would be good to have outside know-how brought in, a modern set of eyes, you know?
Well, I have my own opinion on what should happen, and it involves spending some money.
Well, you can outsource the whole.
Yes, you can outsource the whole thing and you need to have like a five-year plan so you know what you're working towards, where you wanna be, what you see the town needing in the future, instead of just sitting here taking Band-Aids and putting them on large wounds that, so.
It's, it's epic. I mean, it keeps coming in debilitating waves. Tom lost, Galvin lost, you know, a lot of emails and it took time to bring them back from restored copies. At first, the word was he was not gonna be able to get them restored, and then they were restored. But these are public records.
They are all public records.
They are all public records.
Everything you do on this town computer is public record.
But beyond that, the content of many of the emails are town records. So even if you're arguing that it's convenience way of communicating, that doesn't answer the fact that a lot of our offices are now communicating with the state and other agencies, and those are official communications.
There's no argument that anything that comes out of this office is a public record. There is no argument. You can go and read the A G. office. It's public record. So you can try to make yourself feel better by saying that it isn't, but it is.
There are, there are companies that come in and help not only restructure you, but also move you towards as paperless as you can legally go. Uh, maybe space isn't at a premium now. It's not the idea of space. It's the idea of being able to locate documents.
Yeah.
It's an abyss of paper and it, it'd be eas, life would be a lot easier if a lot more things were searchable. I try to scan and keep stuff electronically. I use less stamps and stationery. You know, Larry's finally gets G O T M S up and running. His carbonized forms are a dollar a form. Hobbs and Warren forms that we type up our licenses with are a buck a form. You know?
Yep.
For a piece of paper. There's no need for it, really.
Right.
Okay, I, you were interested in making a motion a little while ago.
What, fifteen minutes ago?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I second that. Any discussion on the matter? Since there is no discussion on the matter, take a vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.